I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one mission under our head, in the soul, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we will begin with the approval of the minutes. Approval of the minutes, we do have four sets under the consent items. Does anyone have an objection to approving all four together?
No.
Okay. We have the approval of the minutes from May 19th, 2025, regular meeting. The approval of the certification of the May 19th, 2025 executive session. The approval of the minutes from June 3rd, 2025, regular meeting. And the approval of the minutes from the June 3rd, 2025 study session. Were there any questions, comments, corrections? Any comments from the audience? Baring none, will accept a motion to approve all of the consent items.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Katie, seconded by Mark. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries four zero. Financial report. Shawna, do you want to walk us through this, that we've had some changes for the better?
Okay, education. Our receipts were $1,039,389.59. Our year-to-date receipts have been $5,319,624.28. Month-to-date expenses were $1,368,462.24. We did not do any transfers, leaving our appropriation balance at $9,589,403.19. And we have spent, or leaving our percentage at about 62.39%. Our year-to-date expenditures have been $6,227,819.78, leaving us with a deficit cash balance We did receive our ADM, it has not been receiveded in, so we did receive our ADM payment for the month of $1,023,864.51. So that would be, by the end of June, we should be back into a positive balance. It's not going to be a large amount, but we will be back into a positive. May was a three-pay month as opposed to two, so, and we had a vast majority of, as I've said in our study session, our software renewals for curriculum, textbook, IT, everything seems to happen somewhere between February and May. So, so there's been just a lot of hit to, especially the education fund, with absorbing costs that we've previously been able to take out of other funds. The debt service fund, we had receiveded in $8,231.34. And year-to-date receipts are $41,156.70. Our appropriation is still the same, $3,057,000 for our debt payments. We will be making our debt payments at the end of June. Everything is due either June 30th or July 1st, so those will reflect then in next month's report. That leaves our cash balance at $1,601,041.41. I did receive notice in the mail, but also we received our ACH notice from email that we have received, or will receive, I'm sorry, our tax payment distribution tomorrow, so that should hit the bank. The debt service amount will be $1,151,493. So that amount will go to our debt service fund to make those debt service payments at the end of the month. And then the operations fund, our receipts were $13,112.51. Our year-to-date receipts have been $504,565,68. And our month-to-date expenses were $389,911.6, leaving our appropriation balance at $4,131,427.57. And again, spending down 68.63%. Our year-to-date expenditures are, have been $1,933,31.23, leaving us a deficit balance of $998,297.47. Good news is, our property tax distribution will be received tomorrow, so we will receive $2,046,948.1 into our operations fund. Along with that came our audit expense, which was about $62,000, that we came out of the top of our property tax distribution that we had to pay for our last audit. So if it hadn't been for that, we would have had about 2.1 million. So that the end of, I'm anticipating by the time we get through the end of June, our cash balance should be right around 800,000 by the time we pay our payroll, because we're doing claims now, so we'll have one more payroll that will come out in June. So there's a positive thing, we'll be back positive in our operations fund, and then moving forward with regular operating expenses. So those are the positives, that by the end of June, we get all of our tax payments, our distributions, and we should be back into a positive. The education is going to be, I think, moving forward, I think we're going to be a little closer to probably under the 500,000 mark as a cash balance moving forward till we hit November. We'll have another three-pay month in November. But as far as the expenditures moving forward, I think with the changes we've been making and savings that we're having, I think we'll start to see that slowly come back around again to where we start carrying a larger balance. But we're just anticipating the next couple pays, we still have some residual things coming out that will impact into that balance for the education fund. Okay, that's it. So good news and bad news, but.
I'll take it. Good and bad.
And honestly, Jenna and I did look at where we were this time last year. We are, when we said about 200,000 more in our operations fund this time this year than what we were last year, because we had done a transfer from the education fund into operating. So we had had about, close to 900,000, but if we take away that 300,000 cash balance that we did from education to operating, it took it down to about six. So we're about 200,000 more than where we were this time last year.
Anybody have any questions? Questions from the audience? Okay. Thank you, Shawna.
You're welcome.
Okay, we had claims totaling $1,069,859.56. And we have the approval of the payrolls totaling $1,051,265.80. Are there any questions, comments, concerns about the claims or payroll? Okay, any comments from the public? All right. As long as there's, everyone is okay, we'll approve the financial report, all three items as presented.
So moved.
By Jenny.
Second.
Seconded by Mark. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries four zero. We have the approval of the handbook for daycare at Columbia. And the changes for this were in yellow. Does anybody, we have the new rate, $125 a week for the first child, $62.50 per week. That's for four to five days per week. And then on the one to three days per week, it's, the change is $25 a day. And this cracks me up. Under 26, snot suckers may also be left in the infant room if needed. Blankets are only for 12 months and older, that is written in there explicitly now. And then also verbiage as far as a child being ill or extremely suffering what appears to be discomfort or persistent excessive crying, that they may be sent home just to make sure that everything is okay and that they get checked out. Jenna, is there anything else you want to emphasize besides?
I don't believe so. I, principals have this month off, but I do want to reiterate the appreciation that was shared with me and Jason writing the grant and being able to cut some costs for teachers and faculty and staff over this past year. So I think that this is more in line with what we're used to. It was just, as far as the weekly pay and the daily pay, it was that grant that helped offset that for a year. It was greatly appreciated, and I appreciate Jason's work in that, and our parents understanding that it was a one-year reprieve and that things are moving back to normal since the grant has ended.
Any questions, thoughts? Any from the public? Baring none, will accept a motion.
Same.
Moved by Katie.
Second.
Seconded by Jenny. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries four zero. We also have the approval of the handbook for virtual students. And again, the changes are in yellow. There really were only two, one discussing the mandatory meetings. The meetings are mandatory, and they're scheduled weekly with a virtual learning coordinator. And then the attendance, House Bill 1515 requires any virtual student who has 10 consecutive absences or 18 cumulative absences to be withdrawn from the virtual program. Added that in for parents and students' understanding. Jenna, anything that you'd like to discuss on this?
Exactly, so I appreciate the board's support in this. We do have students who are very successful through this program, who may not otherwise be able to complete their high school career. So very appreciative of this, and I think having this within the handbook and following through on that will just ensure that we continue to have consistency and success in that program.
Great. Any thoughts, comments, questions from the board? Very good. Public? Baring none, will accept a motion.
So moved.
Second, seconded by Katie. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries four zero. And we have two field trips. We have one field trip to Costa Rica with Mrs. Hernandez in 2027. And we also have the approval of an overnight field trip for St. Francis University for the varsity boys' basketball. Did everyone get a chance to review these? Thoughts or comments on anything, questions?
Seems to be in order.
I see everything looked... seemed to be where I looked at it. Jenny, did you see anything?
I know we talked at the study session about a cost for the Costa Rica trip, but maybe it's not known yet with the NFR out.
It's not known.
Okay.
But the reasoning for being this far in advance is so the parents can begin to save and students can begin to save and work towards that, but it's too far away right now to be able to give them a specific cost.
As an aside, it might be helpful then to hear from the people who, I know it's a different field trip, but it's with the same person. For, you know, they went to Spain, I think, or was it Europe, over spring break. It would be interesting to hear from some of the students.
Sure. I'll arrange that.
Any other thoughts? Questions or comments from the public? As long as there's no disagreement, would you guys want to give me a motion to approve both overnight field, overnight field trips that we have listed?
Sure.
As presented? Good.
I said sure. How do you feel?
I feel like I'll second your shoe.
Moved by Katie, seconded by Mark.
I'm going back to bed now, man.
All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries four zero. We do have the, we have a certificate of appointment to the public library for, this is Rachel Arm, this would be something that the school board by law is required to do. And I'm assuming this is Rochester?
Correct.
The Rochester branch?
Correct.
So for the Rochester Public Library Board, this would be our certification for Mrs. Rachel Arm to have a four-year term on the library board.
Is she currently serving as our representative?
Yes.
It's also Fulton and Leiter's Ford Libraries that are part of that.
Oh, they have one more.
Kiwanis is different, Akron's different.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any realizations? Okay, cool. Yeah, I thought Fulton and Leiter's.
Fulton County Public Library Board, which would be, like you said, all be Fulton and Rochester.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other?
It makes the cream happy that she's here. So with that in mind, I still move.
Moved by Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Katie. No comments by the public. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries four zero. We have the second reading of policies. We have talked about this in numerous study sessions, and we had our first reading at our last regular meeting. We do have the policies listed on the website if anyone would really like to have some good bedtime reading. The majority of these were technical changes, a lot of change was to musts and ifs and whatnot, that type of thing. A lot of this was about the AI curriculum, you know, but they're all mandated by the state. None of these policies were anything that this board in particular chose to do. So would anyone like to refer me to read any particular policy, if you could, please? Okay. Baring any issues, then we'll consider that our second reading for the policies as advertised. Donations for June 2025. We have Rochester High School, $700 for the senior breakfast by Everwise Credit Union. And for Rochester High School FFA, we had a $100 donation for FFA activities by Keystone Charitable Foundation. As always, thank you so much to everybody who donates to all of the schools. Very much appreciated. Any questions about donations? I know, will accept a motion to approve donations for the month.
So moved.
Moved by Jenny.
Second.
Seconded by Mark. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries four zero. And we have our personnel report, June 16th, 2025. For Riddle Elementary School, we have summer school teachers, Amy Freeman, 10 days, hourly rate 39.03. I gotta ask, what's the 10 days, two days, 10 days?
Well, summer school is 10 days, and sometimes teachers can't commit to the entire 10 days, so they will split that assignment.
I got you. Okay, just making sure. Christina Wortley, two days, hourly rate 46.85. Razma Melton, 10 days, hourly rate 32.76. Emily Kinser, eight days, hourly rate $30.27. Summer school instructional assistants, Jane Feldman, hourly rate $21.65. Amber Willard, hourly rate $14.25. And Sydney Trippenfeldus, I'm so sorry if I butchered that, hourly rate $15.05. Summer intercession, Kenneth Hughes, hourly rate $53.12. Corporation recommendations, Michelle Jaeger, summer crew leader for the maintenance custodial tasks. Rate of pay, her regular rate of pay is $18.07 per hour. And for the crew leader rate at $20.07 per hour, that's being recommended, this would be for the summer only, there was a letter explaining that. So that 20.07 would be for the summer timeframe, and then it would go back to the, my understanding, the hourly rate the school year. Correct. We have RHS athletic recommendations, Colt Meadows, assistant coach for varsity girls' basketball program, stipend $3,900. Joe Shaker, assistant coach varsity football program, stipend $1,950. Kayden Zek, assistant coach varsity football program, stipend $1,950. And Jake Hottashell, assistant coach varsity boys' basketball program, stipend $3,900. Eli Swango, varsity, volunteer varsity football program. Luke Parson, volunteer varsity football program. Joe McCarter, volunteer coach varsity boys' basketball program. And Kyle Reinhardt, volunteer coach varsity boys' basketball program. Can we get some acronyms in there for these? Asking for a friend here.
Sure.
Rochester High School athletic resignations, Adrian Pollak, varsity girls' tennis coach, effective June 9th, 2025. And special services resignations, Peggy Johnson, part-time custodial staff at the Learning Center, effective May 30th, 2025. And Haley?
Latteser.
Latteser?
Latteser.
Latteser. Columbia Registered Nurse, effective June 22nd, 2025. Maintenance department resignations, Valerie Tully, from Head Building Tech, on May 8th, 2025. And FMLA, we have Laura Myers, for family member, June 17th, 2025, through approximately June 29th, or July 29th, 2025. Any additions or corrections? Accept a motion to approve personnel report.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Katie. All in favor, raise your hand. Personnel report carries four zero. Mrs. Vance.
I'd like to thank those department heads who are here this evening during the summer. Things slowed down a bit for principals and assistant principals, but this is where this crew really picks up. So I appreciate you being here tonight and sharing what you're working on. Mr. Kissler, if you don't mind sharing about the server upgrade that's coming up and talking us through that a little bit. I know that that will interrupt some of our business days and how we're going to handle those as you transition.
Starting June 25th through the 27th, we are doing a server upgrade, so we will have to shut everything down. Everybody was a little disappointed, they wanted the whole week, but we're keeping it down to three days, so I'm trying to keep things running here. But we will be down for three days to switch out the servers, move everything over, and make sure everything's back up. We also have to be back up because registration starts after 4th of July, so.
I appreciate you considering that's moratorium week as well.
Yeah, added up to moratorium.
Which helps slow things down around here, so. Any questions for Mr. Kissler? Have they been doing registration again at the fair?
We didn't do registration last year. We will have a booth there, I want to have a booth there, but we didn't get a lot of people signing up up yet, but we'll have it.
I was going to mention, one of the things that Scott and we did talk about is for our phone system, is it will be down as well, that will, they'll set up an automated attendant, so that way it'll, the message will go out to let people know that our systems are down and that.
We'll also have it on the website as well.
Yeah. So that would try to get the communication out there that what's going on throughout the district those three days.
We've got great news this afternoon, but I'll let her share.
So some of the things that has been going on, we're still waiting on the state to drop the template for the meal pricing. We know it will have to go up, we just don't know when until they release it. They said they're still tweaking it. Our vendors for the upcoming school year is commercial food. They will do like snacks and beverages for us. Heartland Mosaic will be for our POS running system. We will also have Deans coming in as our milk vendor again, and GFS is our other provider. Deans is going to be moving to an online ordering system after meeting with Teresa Fleming from there. And GFS, we have a 1% discount in the summer months that we normally don't get if we do a 40% order in June and a 60% in July. And they said by the time our rebates roll around, instead of the 1%, I normally get for doing the bills weekly, we'll get about 3.5% for the whole year. So we've already hit a quota for June, as long as we hit 60%, which we will for July, we'll get additional discounts on them. And I had a meeting with Jennifer Musoul from the value chain supply from Farmwise. She's looking into getting us someone that can supply yellow watermelons. We got them in a few times last year, and she's also set me up with a couple other farmers and stuff. I have a meeting with Joseph Fleming coming up in a couple days to see what he can offer us. And, let me get my other note here, I don't know where I want to start. I guess we'll start with this one. There is a fresh fruit and vegetable program that is for, it's a grant, and each year you have to apply for it. It's based on free and reduced percentages per school, not district. So you could have 20 schools in your district, but if somebody else beats you into the number category, as far as we only have 20, we can hand out, we might not get it every year, but we will apply every year. This is try a bite program. So the food service department will get the food in, they will process the food, and they will do all of the billing information for it. I've talked to Jason Snyder a couple times about this. He's talked to his teaching staff. So what we do is we get the food ready for them, and then he will take it to his teaching staff where they can come into the cafeteria, and they will teach them what the new foods are. So they have to have an educational portion for this. It can't be during our breakfast or lunchtime, so they recommend that we do the children that have meals late in the afternoon, they do the morning try a bite. And then in the afternoon, we do the children that had the earlier lunchtime. Right now, it's about $65 per student, three days a week for the total for the year. If that goes well, we could move up to five. This program runs from pre-K all the way up until sixth grade, but again, we have to fall within that category. Normally, they award it to about one school a district if they're able to. And we got about $21,515 towards that. The program has to start by September 15th. So I know they've done it in the past at Columbia, I just wasn't here during that time for it, but we've done it. Does that make sense? Because sometimes I ramble really fast. And I know Amber probably can't keep up, but we'll have to email later. And then the other thing that happened was, the USDA always awards us so much commodity items based on our previous reimbursements for reimbursable meals from the year before. When they get to a certain part of the year, if schools chose not to utilize it, they put it back out for other schools to pick it up. Normally, we get anywhere from $2,000 to $8,000. I got about $6,000 the first round, and then they came back out and emailed each individual school that took an opportunity of it, and it's first come, first served. We ended up getting an additional $65,871.69 in commodities for the school year. So this was a big, big year. I think that's it. I mean, I have training and stuff coming up, but.
Thank you. You did such a wonderful job.
We can tell you're talking inside.
The school's not so much, it's like, where are we going to put this? I was like, it's going to be a big influx at first, but we will work through it and we will get it to the kids. So, because we only got $95,000 this year, so to get 65 additional, that's huge. And there was still some food setting that the schools were not taking advantage of. I just, I ran out of storage space, so I kind of need another freezer or another dry storage area, because this happens a lot. I just, I just, we got really lucky this year with that big amount.
How are the summer meals going so far?
It's down a lot because the library isn't open here in Rochester because they're doing construction. And that was a huge pull, because you know, the kids get dropped off there and such, and we need to just get our programs aligned to start within an hour of each other moving forward, because we have to have X amount of year, or X amount of meals per day in order to break even. If we can break even, they'll be fine with it. We are taking to Kiwanis, we're not breaking even there, but the high school's doing just enough to keep their location at an even or a little bit of a positive balance that they can cover the students that are over there that we're feeding.
Does the high school help serve, like is our parks program?
The parks program, they are picking them up there, but they aren't dropping them off there this year, so that would be nice maybe, because sometimes when the kids get in there, if they smell it, they might not think they want it until they get in there. So we've been trying to work with her to get that switched to where we go back to a pickup and drop off, because that would be very beneficial. And then the high school satellites the meal out to Kiwanis, and they normally satellite out to the Fulton County Public Library up here in Rochester. And we have Riddle open also, but.
Guys have been pretty busy. We had teachers do a stupendous job cleaning out the, what, the north side, south side of the Learning Center here. We actually had the whole hallway was packed with stuff that they didn't need anymore. So we recycled it and recycled what we could. We've got some stuff going on auction. We've got some stuff going on auction, and then we got quite a bit of stuff that we threw away also, it was just trash. We've had a couple more breakdowns that we've had to replace them, hoses, belts, bolts. We're still working on one more that the, the bolts actually broke off in the motor itself, we're trying to get those out. Got the softball field cleaned up, all the trash, scrap, everything gone out of there, so that looks a lot better over there. Shawna and I have been working with the vendor. They're going to come in and do a... Trying to think of a word. Assess, assess the school system and see if we have the proper staffing that we needed all the schools for maintaining the buildings and cleaning them, and they'll give us a report back for that. And then also they provide toiletries, chemicals, and stuff, so we're going to, we're looking at a couple vendors to check and see what they have, what they can offer as far as maybe a price savings to get us in, you know, get us in with them. All the schools were doing summer cleaning, and then today, our state boiler inspector was in. He found nothing wrong with all the schools. All the schools are in compliance, doing well. There is one thing that we got to work on, but the boiler's not in commission, so he said, you know, he really wasn't worried about it, he just told me to make sure we get it done, so we just got to get that done. But everything's going pretty well. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's all we have. A lot of behind-the-scenes, Shawna and I are starting to talk about budget for the next year, working with principals. I met with Jason today. We're working on a COPS grant in an effort. Mr. Kissler had to help us with that as well, so we worked on that today. The principals, this is the time, there are just a couple weeks that everybody kind of decompresses, and then starting the end of the week, next week, we'll probably ramp up again and get everything going, but we haven't had any turnover much, so not a lot of interviews, those types of things going, which is great for, for everybody, for the district, for the students, for the community, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
I'm just happy we had a boiler inspection that was good. I like it.
Any inspection with fear. Any board members have any additional thoughts, comments, questions?
Nope.
Would you like to give us the commissioner's report?
You guys are talking.
All right, anybody else? Anyone from the public, anything for the good of the group? All right. We are adjourned. You can stay if you wish.
Don't be late for me.